I have to see this thing.
Hey Bill. Okay, Bill.
Sure.
What happened to the children? Why is it closed for repairs?
Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, April 6th. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley?
Here.
Mr. Brant?
Here.
Ms. Menser?
Mr. Sernad?
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda this evening is a special agenda for the election of the council member to fill the vacancy in Ward, in the Ward 1 seat. So, first up, we have the resolution approving the rules and procedures.
Okay, Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number 31287, approving rules and procedures regarding the filing, or excuse me, the filling of the council member Ward 1 vacancy by appointment.
Second.
I'm moved in second to approve Resolution number 31287, approving the rules and the procedures for filling the council member Ward 1 vacancy by appointment. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Yes, Your Honor, I move to receive and file the following applications for the council member Ward 1 vacancy. Kim Edsel, 933 8th Avenue. Gage Miskiman, 2251 Pleasant View Drive. Lou Rogers, 1565 Pleasant View Drive.
Second.
I'm moved in second to receive and file the following applications for council member Ward 1 vacancy, Kim Edsel, Gage Miskiman, and Lou Rogers. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Okay, next up, we will have each of the candidates make a presentation to the city council. And we will just go in alphabetical order. We'll start with Kim Edsel. Welcome.
I would like to read my letter of intent. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, I would like to be considered for the open Ward 1 City Council position. I have lived in Marion for most of my life. I grew up here, went to school here, worked here, and opened a business here. Like a lot of people, I moved away from my hometown for a few years to experience life in other cities and then eventually moved back. In 2010, I ran for City Council for no other reason than wanting my hometown to reach higher. And Marion sure has. It was my pleasure to represent the interests of the people and businesses of Ward 1 for seven years. I made myself available to listen to the community's concerns and communicated policies, programs, and the direction of the city. I strongly feel that Marion grew in a very positive direction during my seven years and is continuing on that path. It has truly been wonderful to see what an exciting destination Marion has become. I would be honored to serve on the City Council again and represent the constituents of Ward 1.
Thank you, Kim. Do we take, do you have questions, or?
Yep, you should have a document for any questions.
So. Thanks. All right, well, uh.
You want me to stay here?
Yes, please. We'll have some, we'll have questions. Uh, my question to you is, what do you like most about Marion and the direction the City Council is taking?
With Marion? I love the community. I just feel like with this, when we started on this journey, everyone just got so excited and really got involved. This, I just love how involved everybody is.
Uh, Kim, what do you see as challenges for the city of Marion?
Not sure what to say about that. I just think of everything as so positive. I don't know. I know there are challenges. You guys might know more than I do, but, um, I can't think of anything. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Kim, what do you believe the role of the City Council is in you as a council member?
I think the role is to represent your ward and be available for questions and concerns and represent the city in a positive way. Make good decisions.
Kim, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Uh, some of the current legacy projects for Marion include the fire station headquarters, public service facility, the library, the Central Plaza Project. If you could influence the direction of the city and the next legacy project, what do you envision and why? Next legacy project?
I'm really excited about the project along, like Indian Creek. I'm not sure of the name you're calling that, but I've heard bits and pieces about that. I would love that. I mean, that's, that's very exciting. And I know there was talk when I was on City Council before about that.
Thank you.
That's me, Kim. Good evening. What do you hope to accomplish as a member of the City Council?
Just keeping Marion going in the right direction. It seems like Marion is in a very positive light right now, getting a lot of good attention. Everybody seems positive about Marion, and I just want to keep that going.
One final question. Do you plan on running for this position uh, in the next city election if you're appointed? Are you, do you plan to run for the position?
I do.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Mr. Miskiman?
Weird being up here this time. Uh, Gage Miskiman, 2251 Pleasant View Drive. First of all, thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me. When I first learned of the Ward 1 vacancy, I thought, this is the perfect time for me. As you all know, I grew up in Marion. More specifically, I grew up in Ward 1 near Hannah Park. I spent my summers going to the library with my mom, riding my bike with my friends in and around Uptown Marion. And of course, stopping at the Tasty Freeze when it was still called Tasty Freeze every chance we could. Today, my parents and sister who are here today still reside in the ward. In fact, my parents still live in the same house I grew up in on Hillview Drive. To live in Ward 1 and to live in Marion now as a young professional who has returned home is exciting for me. I've returned home with a desire to throw myself fully into this community that raised me. As you all also know, I spent almost three years covering this community as a reporter for the Gazette. Throughout that time, I've learned the ins and outs of the city, how it works. I've established great relationships with the council, city manager, department heads, and city staff. My network also includes the fantastic women at the Chamber, Medco, our local business owners, folks within our school districts, Lynn County supervisors, county department heads, as well as community members all over Lynn County and in our smaller communities. I've also covered three budget cycles in this community. And each year, I've learned more and more about how the budget works in the city. At the last budget work session, it felt like I had studied well for an exam. And it was, and I understood the various pieces that made up the budget puzzle. From the CIP, to the tax levy, and how all those pieces make up a residence tax bill and why. I also witnessed a derecho recovery in here with you all in this very room when it was turned into a command center. I've covered and understood each new project that has come online in the past few years. The library, the fire station, the YMCA, and all the other projects developers have pursued, including the various new housing projects. I also know the majority of the projects that are on the way. I've learned and understood about FEMA processes, ARPA funding, block grant funding, various infrastructure projects, including Tower Terrace. While still in Hiawatha, Kim Downs made sure I knew the ins and outs of that one. And I also followed and understood the Seventh Ave Streetscape project, multiple plaza projects, and oh yeah, the state rollback. And Ryan Waller made sure I understood that one. Not only have I understood it all, but I was able to communicate it effectively to our residents as a reporter. And I could do the same as a council member. I do feel as if I'm the personification of what this ward in Marion is looking to do. Keep young people here and/or bring them home to work, live, play, and raise a family. I'm a prime example of all of that. I'm home, and I want to be here and give Marion my all. As a council member, I think I would bring a younger perspective to the council that is currently missing. I think I would also be a great complimentary piece to the team. And I hope to use that lens to reach younger folks in our community. I was really inspired months ago at a council meeting where Lynn Mar students came and presented projects about mental health and community engagement, two things I'm personally passionate about. One group was presenting on ideas that they had to spread awareness about mental health in our library, and the other group had just great community engagement ideas in general. But for me, what I saw most was a willingness from them to engage with their city and get involved. I'd love to be able to explore that more with our young professionals as well as our students, who are residents of Marion too. And I can do that because I also bring that community engagement perspective. Currently, I work as the Community Engagement Coordinator for Four Oaks, statewide children and family nonprofit with around 700 employees statewide and a $50 million annual budget. I know how to connect to people and engage them in conversation around issues. I did it in journalism in this community, and of course, I'm doing it now at Four Oaks. I've worked with Amber for the last three years, and she does a great job on the communication side. And I think it would be extra great to have another community engagement mind that is also on the council to combine both those perspectives and see how we can continue to effectively reach our residents in all corners of the community and communicate those issues and projects in the most digestible way for everyone to understand and feel like they're part of that conversation. And last, but most importantly, I simply care deeply about Marion and its future. It's taken a lot of work to get to the point we're at today. A lot of long-term planning and strategizing, surveying, figuring out the priorities while balancing a mostly residential base over the years. I strongly believe in building on that momentum, finding paths to getting even more people involved and continuing to reach even higher. And covering this community as a journalist simply made me re-fall in love with it. I want Marion to be a community that excites everyone to live in, move to, or visit. I'm deeply passionate about this and will be able to give my time and attention to the city and its residents. I'm also just super eager to learn even more from fellow council members, city staff, and our residents as I get going. I've been telling everybody this, but I feel as if I've been a city council intern for the past few years, reading all the packets, attending all the meetings, speaking to all the department heads and staff when I have questions about agenda items. You know, I've been doing a lot of the work already, and now I feel like I'm ready for the full-time position. And I'm ready to hit the ground running. So, thank you for your time and your consideration, and I'm eager to take your questions.
Thanks, Gage. I'll ask you my question. What do you like most about Marion and the direction the City Council is taking?
Definitely. For me, as just a young person, being in the community, we're at a point now in the city where, you know, it's on and up. When I was little, riding, being able to ride my bike around Uptown Marion, you know, storefronts. A lot of empty storefronts and seeing that thriving and not only in the uptown, but across the community. I really think Marion's an interesting position in the state of Iowa where a lot of towns are seeing lower populations, we're seeing increases, and that's exciting in Iowa, and I want to continue to be a part of that as we go forward.
Okay, Gage, what do you see as challenges for the city of Marion?
I think the big challenge just continues. It's being able to grow responsibly as we get more people and figuring out how to be able to raise that commercial base as we pursue these infrastructure projects. I know Tower Terrace will be a great benefitter of that. So, just being able to grow responsibly and continue to reach higher while also just being responsible and looking at what projects we're doing along the way to figure out how to make that path the best it can be. Yeah, was there a second part to that question?
That was just it. No second parts.
Okay.
Gage, what do you, what do you believe the role of the City Council and you as a council member is?
I believe the role of the City Council member is to, of course, be a representative for not just your ward, but for the community as a whole. Marion's in a unique position where all the wards truly do work together as we're, as we're growing and like I said, that's uncommon for Iowa right now, and it's good to see people coming in and moving here. And to be a representative at those community events responsibly, read the packets, understand the policy being proposed, communicating with city staff, communicating with your residents. And just, for me specifically, my goal is, my role as a specific city council member, like I said, I bring that community engagement perspective. So, I really would take that responsibility on to make sure that I'm engaging all those corners of the community and and making sure that everyone feels involved in these city processes as much as possible.
Thank you.
Some of the legacy projects for Marion include the fire station headquarters, public service facility, library, and the Central Plaza Project. I can't say that word apparently. If you could influence the direction of the city and the next legacy project, what do you envision and why?
Um, I have a couple, for sure. The Central Plaza Project and the future of talks with the Aquatic Center. And the reason for both of those is I see those both as two projects with great potential for not just Marion, but for the region. And one of my big things is I think that that regionalization and being able to to have Marion blend into that whole metro area and be a leader in the metro area and in the state of Iowa. Having those projects that are not only great for people who live here already, but for people to come visit too. And have Marion's name and message and brand to be able to spread outward.
That brings me, my turn, Grant, or Gage. Good evening. My question is, is what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the City Council?
Yeah, um, I'd go back on the, you know, I really hope that me bringing the various differing perspectives, you know, the younger perspective, the community engagement perspective, to, to help really engage those younger members of our community, as well as all members of our community, but I just think that there's that, that role, that complimentary piece that I can, I can fill that's not currently there. Sure.
Okay, and the final question is, do you, if you're selected, do you plan to run for the position again in the fall?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Gage.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rogers? Welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor. Member of City Council, everybody in this room, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lou Rogers. I live at 1565 Pleasant View Drive. It has been my home since I retired from the Marine Corps in 2016. I'm an old Miami boy. By, well, originally, I was born in Panama, grew up in Miami, Florida. I went to the Marine Corps, and I found Jesus in Iowa, so I've decided, my family, my wife's from Marshalltown, and she's like, we need to move back to Iowa. So, I said, yes, ma'am, we're moving back to Iowa. Where? Marion. All right, good to go. And no, no idea about Marion back in 2016, but you know what? I have done so much here since we moved here with our five kids. I've helped raise, they're different ages now. Uh, I coached Marion Boys Baseball. Uh, it's been, been one of my pastimes since 2016, since I was little. I've been with Boy Scouts and now with Trail Life. We go to church in Antioch. Been involved with their school stuff here and there with so many activities at the household. It's, it's been such a busy time, but uh, one of the things that, that really helped me out to be a part of this community is I ran for, uh, ran for State House in 2020. First time, I was trying to find my way here after I retired from the military and just an opportunity for me to serve my community and to do more and more and more with uh, the time I spent for 20 years in the military. Done so much for that time, and then uh, we had got hit by derecho at that same moment. It was a very tough time during the election process, so I immediately turned into lumberjack Lou, and we just went to help house to house whoever had trees down and learn how to chainsaw. I mean, I never really grew up doing chainsaw activities until derecho happened, and it really changed our mindset about just getting involved with our neighbors. And, you know, one of the things that Jesus teaches us is to love your neighbor as yourself. And that's just the bottom line. That's how we basically live our home and live our lives every single day. And just as Kim engages, you know, really to just has, have shared their, uh, the commitment to the community, I say, I share the same thing as well as if I'm selected as a City Councilman, that I will also represent not just myself and my family, but most importantly, to the community and those that sit before here in the City Council will work as a team player. Looking at things and identifying stuff. In the last seven years, I've worked as a contractor in different businesses where I do mostly fire alarm, security, cameras, been in this building numerous times, just looking around, making sure things are safe and accounted for. Uh, I've applied for the Fire Department and Police Department in the past. So, they're very near to dear to me in my heart as, as a servant of the community as first responders. So, I was a fireman too for two years as a, as a volunteer firefighter in Jacksonville, North Carolina. During my, uh, end of my service, and then we moved out here to Iowa, like I said before, in 2016. And has been my home ever since, and we're just blessed to be a part of this community and how, how much is poured into us um, and my kids, especially getting them involved in recycling, getting them involved in, and now Trail Life, which we, um, it's kind of like Boy Scout, but, um, with a different mission, more geared towards Jesus Christ. And my kids teach us a lot of how to love others without being judgmental. And that's something that's a good caveat or reminder for us how to live and how to treat one another in this community. We have come from all different shapes, sizes, and backgrounds. That's one of the things that I bring to the table and that seat if I'm elected your council. So, that's pretty much Lou Rogers in a nutshell. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll ask you my question. Uh, what do you like most about Marion and the direction the City Council is taking?
Your Honor, the, the most important thing I like about, well, best thing and most, our favorite thing is being outdoors. We love camping, and I don't know if anybody's ever seen me hike or run rough out here on these trails, or I live over there on the back end, um, as further down on Pleasant View Drive as you can get, and that whole road. So, I've hiked up and down, across, and with my backpack. I just love getting outdoors. It reminds me of being back in the service, and that'll never leave you. Once you're a Marine, always a Marine. I've been for 20 years, been in Afghanistan, Iraq, seen all the craziness in the world, and again, my favorite thing my kids love is just adoring the things that the outdoor has to bring. You know, stop doing this and getting out there and enjoying life. And I'm glad that Marion is the tip of the iceberg. I think other towns, especially the one that we rub shoulders with every single day, the Big Cedar Rapids, they're looking at Marion as that, that cornerstone how to live every single day, to live out, to live and enjoy life, and that's why it's growing. And I remember when this thing, which is a small town back in 20, or 2004, when I was recruiting duty in Marshalltown, but we drove, I drove up here every single month, and there was not that big road. I'm sorry, I'm just going on the rabbit hole, but it was just a small, little, tiny square. And now it's just, it's, it's ginormous, even since 2016. I'm just blessed to be here, Your Honor.
Okay, uh, Lou, what do you see as challenges for the city of Marion?
I think the challenges, um, bottom line is if we need to focus more in, as our city, like I said, set the right example for those outside and abroad, like our big, our big influences from obviously the state and abroad. I think if we just hold our ground and stay accountable of our own actions and be key leaders and represent our people respectfully, there shouldn't be any challenges. But if there are, we can take them head-on and responsibly and with respect for others and their welfare.
Lou, what do you believe to be the role of the City Council and you as a council member is?
Say that again, I'm sorry, sir.
What do you believe the role of the City Council and you as a council member is?
Oh, that's a good question. I apologize for the second repeat. My, my brain's like going in octane level, but the key role obviously is, I'm not in it for me. I'm in it for, like I said, for everybody behind me and those that are watching and that are not here. But to work together, to come with common ground, some decision-making process, and again, it's not Lou Rogers, it's for, for the benefit of everybody and in force for the growth of the city. And there's no, there's no space or no room in this world for hostility or personal anything with anybody else. We can come to an understanding or agreement or disagreement by being respectful with one another. That thing is first and foremost. That's how we do it at home. If I can do it at home and manage my six kids, I have five at home and one, my older one, um, but, uh, you can manage that at home, then you can reciprocate that in the community, and then it reciprocates even bigger wherever, wherever I go, wherever God takes me.
Some current legacy projects for Marion include the fire station headquarters, public service facility, library, Central Plaza Project. Um, if you could influence the direction of the city and the next legacy project, what do you envision and why?
Well, this is, uh, that's a really good question, sir. So, as I said before, the police and fire, first responders are very near dear to me. I want to make sure, or we should make sure rather, that they get all the the resources that they need at their disposal. There should be no question about that because I'm believed this, I would, as a citizen here, we depend on the safety and security of our, of our town to make sure that the bad guys go bad where they belong and that, like I said, all the training and resources are available for them. That means if their building is crumbling, and I saw the new building down north side and Lynn Mar side, that's an awesome building. I wish I was there right now, but I didn't get, I didn't get opportunity. All I know is that I'm blessed to see that and to experience the build from, from the ground up as I drive by there where the new Y is at. Oh, I forgot about that. It used to be a lifeguard, the old Y building, ancient building. I love it. Now it's an apartment complex, but the new building's great. My kids love that place, but I love the fact that if it's a building or a, a project that's going to benefit us as a community, I'm for it. If it's something that's ill will, I'm going to question it and, and respectfully, and, and we deliberate and talk about it, absolutely. And it's no different from we do at work. It's a bad decision, it's a bad decision, and, but it should be voiced with, with all respect.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Lou, what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the City Council?
Excellent question. Again, working together diligently with the rest of you and see where I can contribute, my skill set from my background, and I could talk about it all day long, but it's not, like I said, it's not about me. Taking the focus off this guy who has a mouth, but also has motion and, uh, and passion and, and everything. I see the bigger picture. I'm involved with projects. Probably a lot of you indirectly with a lot of things that we do with security and fire and, and accident control, but I want to be a contributor, whatever that case might be, save money, uh, come up with some other out-of-the-box plans to help contribute to the, the rest of the people in this room that fulfill a pivotal role in making our city thrive and grow in the right direction.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One final question.
Yes, sir.
If you're, uh, selected, do you, would you plan to run for the position in the fall?
Without a doubt, sir. Without a doubt, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the presentations portion of the okay. Uh, at this point, at this point, we will do the balloting. Before we do that, I just want to sincerely thank all three candidates for, uh, applying for this. I think it's indicative of the direction the city is going. Uh, and when, when we have such qualified, passionate people of our community come forward uh, and want to offer to be part of the solutions, to be part of, uh, the progress and to keep helping move the city forward in a, in a positive direction. So, I, I do want to thank you all, and it takes, you know, a lot to put yourself out there and to come forward and offer, offer yourself, uh, for the position. Obviously, there's only one opening, so, um, whoever is not selected, I would encourage you to please stay involved. We have over 80 positions on boards and commissions that are directly impacting decisions of the city and the lives of people who live here. We have, uh, many ways in which people can volunteer and make a positive impact. impact. And so I would encourage you to look for those opportunities and to stay involved and continue offering your ideas and your and your energy and your talent uh to to better our city. So on behalf of all of us in the residents of Marion, thank you for for applying. Okay?
We have four votes for Gage Miskin and one vote for Kim Edsel. Um so Gage Miskin is uh the winner. Um I per code, I need to read who voted for who. So Jensen Harper, Sternad and Brandt uh voted for Gage and Mayor Abou Osley voted for Kim.
Congratulations. Thank you, Lou and Kim. Okay, so now we'll have the resolution um to officially make the appointment.
Did the resolution change at all with the name of the person or just read it as it's on?
The name is in the body of the resolution, so it's read as is on the agenda.
So just read it as there's no name, but.
Correct.
Okay. Um Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number three one three, I'm sorry, three one two eight eight, making an appointment to fill the vacancy on the Marion City Council until the next pending election as defined in Iowa Code Chapter sixty nine point one two.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution number three one two eight eight, making the appointment to fill the vacancy on the city council until the next pending election is defined by Iowa Code Chapter sixty nine point one two. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. I'll come down front and administer the oath of office.
Hold your numbers up, Gage.
Okay. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Gage Miskin.
Aye, Gage Miskin.
You solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
The ordinances of the city of Marion, Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
That I shall charge all the duties.
Charge all the duties.
Of the office of council member.
The office of council member.
In the city of Marion, Iowa.
City of Marion, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, sure. His parents keep coming too.
Yeah.
Come up.
Come up.
Come up. Guys, it's your time to shine now. I think you know.
Okay. We'll move on uh with the remainder of the uh the agenda. Our next item is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. I'd ask our resident realtor to read the proclamation on my behalf. We have Renee Forsyth with the Civil Rights Commission here to accept the proclamation. You want to come up and stand by by Will, Renee?
Who is also a Realtor.
Who's also a Realtor.
Hmm.
And also, we have Kevin Plotz with the Cedar Rapids Area Association of Realtors here. So welcome to all of you and please proceed, Will.
Whereas April twenty twenty-three marks the fifty-fifth anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Act Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act. And whereas the act sought to open doors of opportunity and eliminate discrimination in housing and to affirmatively further fair housing. And as we celebrate the fifty-fifth anniversary of the historic legislation, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that everyone has an equal and fair access to housing. And whereas fair housing assures individuals have the right to choose where to live without discrimination based on age, color, creed, familial status, gender identity, marital status, mental disability, national origin, physical disability, race, religion, source of income, sex and or sexual orientation. And whereas in Marion, we want to be recognized as an open and inclusive community that is committed to providing fair housing and advocating for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of Marion. And whereas Marion's elected officials encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities and support the goal of fair housing for all people. Now therefore, I, Will Brandt, on behalf of Nicholas Abou Osley, mayor of Mayor of the city of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-three as Fair Housing Month and encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support fair housing. Go ahead, did you want to say?
Yeah. Um, just a couple of things here. As I said, fair housing is important to me because I am a Realtor and for forty-nine or forty-nine, twenty-nine years now. And also, um I am co-chair of the Marion Civil Rights Commission. In the last decade or so, I have served on numerous boards, commissions and task forces, all related to both fair housing and affordable housing. So I'm very passionate about these issues. Fair Housing Month is important because it prohibits discrimination, it helps communities prosper, and it promotes affordable housing. Home ownership is the most important investment someone will likely ever make. The promise to maybe one day pass something on to your children. Home ownership is the very cornerstone of the American dream. Everyone wants a safe home in a safe community with good schools. Research shows that increasing access to affordable housing is the most cost-effective strategy for reducing childhood poverty and increasing economic mobility. Finally, I want to thank the council for the continued support for the housing assistance grants. Making the difference for these families in our community is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Kevin, why don't you take a picture with them? Come on up.
No. I appreciate that, Mayor. Good.
You got you covered, Kevin.
Okay. Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside uh for comments from members of the public on any topic that is listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Anyone's here to address council, please come forward. Please state your name and address and speak into the microphone. Welcome. Yes, should we hand it to the clerk, please? Thank you. Please state your name and address and.
My name is Andrew Sneed. I live at three three two five twenty-ninth Avenue here in Marion.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um what I wanted to bring up um was an item a little further down on the agenda, so I apologize for the for timing.
Okay.
Um but um I wanted to kind of add to the discussion about automated traffic enforcement, i.e. the traffic cameras. Um first off, I'm I'm for them. I believe that it's a great utilization of resources. I know that uh police officers are, you know, kind of hard to come by these days and and funding is is also an issue as well. So it makes sense that, you know, to have an automated traffic enforcement to kind of assist so that police officers can then um move on toward other more more pressing matters certainly. Um again, I'm I'm for the, what I've heard are the two cameras to be to be on Highway thirteen and one fifty-one and one hundred and East Coast Road. And I wanted to propose an additional site for for cameras to be on the street where I live, Twenty-Ninth Avenue, uh which I don't know if you're very familiar, but I kind of went through um a few items or areas of concern on Twenty-Ninth Avenue that speeders are definitely an issue. Um there are four schools on this road. There's Lynn Mar High School, Indian Creek Elementary, Novak Elementary, um and then Lynn Grove Elementary, which is about three or four blocks off of Twenty-Ninth Avenue, but still very near. There's also walking trails. There's two parks, a church. Um Summit Point Senior Living Community is about a block off of Twenty-Ninth Avenue as well. Um plus, you know, hundreds of residents, many of whom with children, many who are elderly, um who have a difficult time backing out of their driveways due to all the speeding traffic on Twenty-Ninth Avenue. Um ourselves, we also have three children, uh one of whom uses a wheelchair for mobility. Um school bus picks them up, drops them off every day. And there are regularly um two to three times a week cars that zoom around and park school bus with sign extended and lights flashing. And sometimes two or three cars at a time, just cruising right past the school bus, which arguably, you know, that might be a separate issue than than traffic cameras. But nonetheless, I believe that it speaks to the culture of drivers on this road. It's it's a real issue. And I guess I would then add, if that's not an option, if it's not feasible to have something like that on that busy road, then perhaps the larger police presence during pickup and drop off time for schools would possibly hopefully deter, you know, the speeders because it's it's a problem. You know, people, you know, it's a thirty mile an hour zone for the majority of that road and it's, I live about a block or so away from the traffic circle and people come right out of that thing and they just open up the throttle and just go zooming by. Literally, you stand there for five minutes and you'll see several cars just noticeably, audibly speeding past. It's it's an issue. So I guess that's all I wanted to bring up was that, you know, I fully support the automated traffic enforcement and would would hope to, you know, expand that to further um bring a little bit of element of safety to the community, especially considering all of the schools and churches and parks and everything right on that one particular road. Um I thank you for your time and consideration and have a good evening.
Thank you. Did anybody have any questions for him? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on with the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A one through F one, resolutions three one two eight nine through three one three zero five and three one three zero seven. Please note the resolution three one three zero six has been removed from the agenda.
Second. Okay, so moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, items A one through F one, resolutions three one two eight nine through three one three zero five and item three one three oh seven. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. For the next part of the agenda, I'll turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, your honor.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley's abstention. This will include items B one through E five and resolution numbers three one three zero eight through three one three one eight.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abou Osley, Abou Osley's abstention, items B one through E five, resolutions number three one three zero eight through three one three one eight. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor of the consent agenda as noted with the mayor's abstention, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. There we go. All right. Have the next two items. We have at this time a public hearing on the proposed amended development agreement with Squaw Creek Crossing Incorporated. Uh who has that presentation?
I do, your honor.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, A one through A three are all related. Um this was a original development agreement we had with Squaw Creek Crossing. And in this proceeding, we would be removing the four parcels that are highlighted in blue and red and extending the incentive to twenty years and reducing it to from nine point six million to seven point five million. The overall goal in this is to segregate out the hotel into a separate agreement, which is what the second public hearing is. And then also, um there are the three in red are unbuilt lots without projects identified at this time. And so we would be placing those under a memorandum of understanding with future action for city council.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Leanne. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this proposed amendment development agreement with Squaw Creek Crossing as described by Leanne? Welcome. How are you? Yeah. Yeah, can name and address, please?
Yeah, Troy Hart from Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay.
I represent Hart Family Hotels. We were the operator of the hotel.
Okay, very good. And if you would, make sure our clerk gets uh name and address sheet uh for her records.
Okay.
But go ahead, please. You can give that to her later. Thank you. Go ahead.
I don't have anything to uh to report other than to ask any questions that you guys might have. Answer any questions if you have.
I don't know. Any questions? Does it look like we have any questions?
That's it here.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody else to address this matter with council? Very good. Okay, we'll close the public hearing uh on this matter and move to the second public hearing that relates to this. And this is on the proposed development agreement with Squaw Creek Crossing Incorporated. Uh I presume this is back to Leanne.
Yes, your honor. Um as mentioned, this one is the blue one. This is for the actual hotel. It basically adds an incentive of one point five million with a ninety percent for five years and fifty percent five years incentive. This application was originally requested with hotel motel tax and we are utilizing tax increment finance.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anybody here to, again, speak about the specifics of this proposed uh development agreement with Squaw Creek Crossing? Mr. Glue, good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm Nick Glue, President of Marion Economic Development. Not specifically about the agreement, but I just want to, in a public setting, take an opportunity uh to thank Mr. Hart uh who traveled here tonight to make sure you all didn't have questions for his project. But also, I want to thank him publicly really for his continued commitment to this community. Um he's an individual that He's an individual that first brought a hotel project to our community before we had things like a pandemic and all of the other fun economic challenges that we continue to navigate. And he's an individual that's continued to believe in really the vision of this community and of that development. And while there is still a lot more work to do before we see a shovel in the ground for this particular project, I want to thank the council for their support of this project and also for Mr. Hart, Mr. Hart, for continuing to believe in the direction that this community is headed. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to address counsel on this matter? I guess I failed to ask, have we received any commentary from the general public on this, to any department or correspondence?
I have not received any.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we'll close the second public hearing and move to the motion.
Mayor Pro Tem, I make a motion to approve the project calendar as follows. Resolutions 31319 through 31321.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar as follows, including Resolutions 31319, 31321. Discussion. Yes, Steve?
Just a couple of comments, to kind of follow up with what Nick talked about. I think, as a city, we certainly understand why there have been delays in getting a hotel built, especially with the economy, the increase in the cost. But certainly appreciate you sticking to this project, looking forward to getting it built and started. I think it's going to be a great asset for the community and looking forward to a Holiday Inn Express to maybe being there in another 18 to 24 months.
Any other questions? I do want to say thank you for traveling the long distance for the public hearing and this resolution. I wish I would have had the foresight to be more prepared with 47 questions for you, Mr. Hart. But anyway, we're glad this project is going to proceed. And I also think this is a simplification of the prior rendition of the agreement, and it makes a lot of sense to simplify and make it understandable. All right. Any other questions or comments on the motion? If not, all those in favor of the project calendars as depicted by Resolutions Numbers 31319 through 31321, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Back to the mayor, I believe.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31322, approving bond purchase agreement, providing the insurance, excuse me, the issuance of road use tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31322, approving the bond purchase agreement and providing for the issuance of road use tax revenue bonds, Series 2023A. Discussion?
Your Honor, we have Michael Maloney here to present on this item.
Okay.
So I'd invite him up.
Please come forward.
I'll be brief here for you tonight. Just wanted to give you some highlights on the bonds. Most of this information regarding the actual financing was shared in the work session before the last council meeting, if you'll recall. And this is the first of three or four planned financings related to the public service facility project. Let's go to the next slide here, just for a little bit of information. So overall, I think we're all aware in the financial markets that inflationary concerns have seen interest rates rise. That being said, over the last month, we've actually seen rates improve, and dramatically so over the last two weeks. We were able to capture some of that. That's one of the two factors for pricing. So that's kind of the yield curve or yield curve index that bonds price off of. The second would be the creditworthiness of the city's bonds. I think what was shared with you for the actual council meeting last go-around was that the rating assigned to these road use tax revenue bonds was AA2 for Moody's Investor Service. It's just one notch below the city's outstanding geo-rating. That was better than anticipated, and therefore, the rates are reflecting a little bit better pricing than expected. We used yesterday's closing benchmark for pricing this morning, and we did review the post-pricing with city staff. The best comparable transactions are pretty good comps of larger cities. Springfield, Missouri, and Waukesha, Wisconsin had similar revenue bonds, similar tax status, and similar sizes. Our results were in line with those two transactions, and actually, a little bit stronger on the long end. There was some demand and preferential treatment towards the state road use tax pledge, not something we see a lot of in Iowa, especially in the national market. Let's go to the next slide. Sharing this as a yield curve chart, because I think I have to do this for every meeting, but also the interesting shape of the yield curve. I think we've heard a lot about the Fed raising short-term rates, but some of the long-term concerns. A month ago, it was sort of the funny turquoise line, and then the parallel orange curve is yesterday's closing municipal index rates. So that looks a little bit goofy, and I thought that was an interesting illustration for you to share over a 30-year period. Our financing was over a 20-year period. Other than that little dip, you can see rates are still pretty flat and relatively low, although we've been spoiled the last several years. Let's go to the next slide. So where the actual results here. Final sizing on the bonds was 7.4 million. The true interest cost of 4.21% should be considered that the structure of these bonds resulted in average life nearly 15 years. So in the general market sense, that's pretty strong performance overall. This 20-year term is interest-only through 2030. That's something we discussed in terms of aligning with the balloon payment on the outstanding 2020 notes. Interest will start being paid at the end of this year, and the total structure is 20 years through June of '43. And the unique feature here is the December of '29 call. We went out asking to have our cake and eat it too from investors. So a short call with higher coupons on the bonds so that we can restructure and refinance along with that balloon payment out in 2030, as we continue to manage the road use tax cash flow as previously shared and communicated with counsel. And one nice thing is we did get better demand, like I explained. So on the $7.5 million of bonding, we actually had orders for $17 million of bonds, which is a good thing. Demand means lower rates. We were able to move those yields a little bit lower this morning. Go to the next slide before wrapping up. Just for the process here, after your council meeting approving that official statement, we were able to get this out and market the bonds, starting on Friday, the 24th, talk to potential investors. I'm always going to tell you that we did make a priority of local banking institutions. Anyone that's following the bank markets know, there's been some turmoil with liquidity. Local banks likely would have some challenges just with the structure in general, but then the tax status for the specific series made it a challenge. But I want to make sure it's clear, we're always prioritizing those local institutions on your bonds. That being said, we were able to get that initial book of investors and have that strong performance as we followed through this morning for the reducing yields, again, outperforming some of those comparable transactions we talked about. So what's left for us to do? Let's go on the next slide. Today is really going to knock out the action items for the council related to this portion of financing. This will lock in the rates and terms, and your bond attorneys at Dorsey and Whitney have finalized the loan paperwork. That's allowing us to close here on April 25th. This is the lax action on this road use tax series. That being said, we'll be following up with the other related utility revenue bonds starting this summer. So that's kind of the big picture. In the event there are questions, happy to answer, but I do want to point out and reiterate again, this is a really good team effort by staff. There was a lot of work behind the scenes of what got shared with you, and I want to just acknowledge that with leadership from Ken, Ryan Miller, Leanne, and Brian. There was just a really good collective team effort. Makes it look simple today, when I get to share to you guys the good news and results, because this is a good project overall. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate all the work on it. Any questions? Any further discussion? Okay, you ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31322, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. Thank you.
Thanks, folks.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 31323, accepting bids and approving purchase agreement with Henderson Products for the replacement dump bodies and snowplows for the public services fleet, and authorizing payment in the amount of $1,538,108.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31323, accepting the bids and approving the purchase agreement with Henderson Products for the replacement dump bodies and snowplows for the public service fleet, authorizing payment in the amount of $1,538,108. Discussion? Hey, all those in favor of Resolution Number 31323, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve Ordinance Number 23-04, amending the Marion Code of Ordinances by adding language regarding automated traffic enforcement, ATE. This is our second consideration. Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance Number 23-04, amending the Marion Code of Ordinances by adding language regarding automated traffic enforcement. Discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah. Chief, with respect to the gentleman's presentation to us during the forum period, will this also include mobile units that can be strategically placed to address issues like 29th?
Yes, sir. The ordinance does have a mobile unit in it. That was the perfect scenario. I was thinking about that when he was up there. It'll be put out for 48 hours based on a complaint from a citizen, just like that. We'll put it out on social media 24 hours advance, so we're not hiding it from anybody, and we'll move it around based off citizen complaints. But that's the perfect scenario for that. That's why we included it.
And in that particular scenario on 29th, would that then require advanced notification? Or can it be placed pretty much immediately upon an identified need?
I think it could be placed immediately, but we would prefer to put it out on social media first to let people know where it's at, with the people that follow us on social media.
Okay.
Again, I think that cuts down some of the stigma attached with the cameras that you see from the pilot.
Yeah. Well, generally speaking, just to comment, and I don't have any more questions, but that's responsive to the gentleman's concern. You know, if people would just follow the law, none of this would be necessary, right?
It's a volunteer program.
Any manager has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just to add on to what Chief Kitzmiller mentioned, I did walk out and share with the resident that we did have this aspect in the ordinance. So our resident is aware of that. And then just a reminder, for third reading, we will be bringing back the policy that goes along with it, which speaks to how those are get deployed. I think Councilman Jensen had asked for some language on that specific unit. So we're working on that, and that'll be included in the resolution that gets brought back for third reading.
Any other discussion? Go ahead, Chief.
Yeah. So since this is a second consideration, I'll be voting yes for the sake of discussion moving forward. But that does not mean I'm a yes overall. I would really like to hear from as many residents as possible about this, knowing that it is an issue a lot of people are interested in. And I think news outlets will probably be interested in too, knowing my background. So just wanted to point that out for the public record.
Thank you. Other discussion? No, later, we'll...
I have a question, just to clarify too. When it comes to the tickets that get sent out, and if someone fails to pay a ticket, can you explain again how the process is for, you know, enforcing that ticket, since it's not on their actual record?
Yeah. If they want to appeal it, they can appeal it to the department, or we can do a municipal infraction and take it to a court. If somebody doesn't pay after that, or they just refuse to pay, we can change it over to a municipal infraction and use the courts to collect. There's also the Iowa... What is it? I'm drawing a blank on the...
The offset.
Offset.
Offset program.
We could utilize, or we could go to a collection agency if it was...
Well, okay, because my question would be if it's an out-of-state truck, runs red light, gets a ticket, they're from California, they're not going to pay, they don't care. Municipal, in fact, you can't do a municipal infraction on someone in California, I assume. So you'd have to do a collection agency? That's how you can try and collect it?
Yep.
But if they're a resident of Iowa, but not a resident of Marion, and they aren't paying, is that also...
Yep.
The only residents of Marion having municipal infraction?
We could issue the municipal infraction. It's just collecting. Would have to go through, once we get a ruling on the municipal infraction, that would trigger them. Either they're going to voluntarily pay it, or we're going to a collection agency or the offset.
So it goes to a collection agency? It's...
We can get a municipal infraction against anyone. We've filed municipal infractions against people out of state before. The issue is whether or not we have any means to collect on that fine and fee once it's done. So it probably is not a cost-effective manner to try and collect against somebody who's out of state unless we know they own property in the area. But for people who are in-state but not a resident of Marion, we can still pursue the municipal infraction. It's really going to depend on the circumstance, what the best course of action is going to be.
So if it goes to a collection agency and they still don't pay, is that a ding on the credit for the individual?
That would depend on what the reporting procedures are for the credit agency that we would, the collections agency we would go through. My guess is, so it would probably be sort of like when you... In collections practice, you're probably not going to go get a judgment for a small amount because it's going to cost more than it would to go get the judgment to collect on. Just speaking from my background doing collections law. But when you have like a collections agency, and I worked with several of those throughout my career as well, generally what they do is they make calls and say, "This is an attempt to collect a debt." And then people generally will pay that because they don't want people to keep calling them and being annoying. And then it depends on what they do from there and the amount of the judgment. So if we have somebody, say, from Waterloo who's speeding through every day and racking up hundreds of dollars, then that might be worth pursuing a judgment on. If it's somebody who doesn't, then they're going to pursue it through the collections agency. And then it's up to the collections agency what they do, because generally, they collect, they keep a percentage of what's collected.
Sure.
So if it's a $65 ticket, I don't remember what the amounts were. 75. So if it's a $75 ticket, their percentage is probably not going to be worth what it costs for them to get a judgment.
Their way to make the fine larger?
Well, that is...
Kind of ties into what I was going to comment on, and that is, as part of this, we plan on bringing back in six months a review of the ordinance, and at that point, we'll have more data to be able to share and find out, is it an issue? If so, what are those, what are some different options that we can pursue to make sure that we're effective in our collections? Including, do we need to look at the fine structure? So we will have that before council six months from the time of approval.
Well, it just, the reason I'm asking these questions is because I was just thinking about it, that it's going to be more detrimental, I guess, to our residents than somebody traveling through, semi-traveling through, that's not, you know, from here. And that just worries me, that bothers me, that, you know, someone could, if it's not going on their driving record, is someone going to get away with continually driving through town and speeding or running red lights and not having to pay the consequences? But if someone in Marion's doing it, they get a municipal infraction and they...
And the way this works is it goes to the registered vehicle. So a company, even though the driver may be out of town, it's going to go to the company.
Right.
So...
Well, it could be a lot of in-town drivers with a company that's out of state.
But again, at this point, what we would need to do is, we will analyze it, understand how, like, what is the true impact? And then also, you know, what are those options to make sure that we are enforcing and collecting as efficient and as comprehensive as possible? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, I just had a quick question. As this gentleman was talking, it was making me think, and I wanted to ask the question as if our mobile unit sees an infraction other than speed or red light, can we impose citation if these vehicles are truly going by a parked school bus with its lights and flashers on? You know, these handicapped bus drivers are dealing with loading students on. So unless these buses are equipped with live cameras, we are missing that traffic. Can we impose citations on those if those are captured?
I'd have to ask the vendors whether they can put that capability in there. I know that they make cameras that actually go on the arms of the bus. One of the vendors has that capability that would then trigger a ticket, so I'm... The technology is out there. Whether or not they can put it on to like a mobile unit, I don't know. I can find out.
Sure. And I'm sorry, that was just one example. I just didn't know if we, you know, because we had talked about whether, you know, how far back video footage was going to be available, you know, if we were using it for, you know, crime evidence or traffic accidents, you know, to try to reduplicate scenarios. I just didn't know if that video capability would stand up if we were to, you know, cite those other violations.
I think we would have to include them in the ordinance to start with, and if they weren't in the ordinance, we might could do it if we could identify the driver, because the ordinance is what gives us the ability to tag the car and not the driver.
Sure. Okay. Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, two questions, Chief.
Yeah, two, two questions, Chief. Uh, first one is, do we know what the ci- what the collection rate percentage is of cities who have the ATEs? And then the se- second question is related to the whole collection aspect of this. How much time is being used by your department or anybody within the city to do that collection process, or is that totally done by the third party?
So the first, the first part of your question, I think it's between fifty-four and sixty percent is what I've seen for agencies in Iowa as far as the collections, uh, we're going on on the voluntary collections. Uh, the actual mailing out of the violations and following up, that goes to the to the vendor. Uh, after the officer would approve the uh the citation, uh, the vendor takes that on. If we had to come back and do a municipal infraction, that would fall back to us to go down that road.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor of approving the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero four, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two-three-zero-five, amending chapter three-one-three dash one-zero-point-one-two for the Marion Code of Ordinances related to parking on private property and towing, second consideration.
Second. Then moved in second to approve was ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-five, amending chapter three-thirteen dash ten-point-twelve of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to parking on private property and towing. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-three, amending chapter three-one-three dash four-point-four-B of the Court of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Echo Hill Road from the city limits easterly to Albernett Road. This will be the final consideration.
Second. Then moved in second to approve the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-three, amending chapter three-thirteen dash four-point-four-B of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Echo Hill Road from the city limits easterly to Albernett Road. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-three, final consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six, amending chapter three-one-three-point-four-point-four-B of the Code of Ordinances, establishing the speed limit on Highway one hundred from the city limits easterly to Highway thirteen, and this is the second consideration.
Second. Then moved in second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six, amending chapter three-thirteen dash four-point-four-B of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Highway one hundred from the city limits easterly to Highway thirteen. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the second consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved.
Your honor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six.
Second. Then moved in second to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six. Discussion?
Yeah, your honor, yes. What what's the stimulus to suspending the rules at this point?
So these are signs that have been up since uh ninety-seven. And um so the DOT has already um established the speed limits. What we found is if a Marion police officer writes it by city code, there's no ordinance to re- impact that. So they have to write it as a state ticket. So by going ahead and doing this, the sign's already there. They've been there since ninety-seven, so we're just cleaning up.
I I know you told us that, I think in work session, so I was wanting to affirm that in this, in this environment. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? This is the motion to suspend the rules. All of them in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number two-three dash zero-six, amending chapter three-one-three dash four-one-four-B of the Code of Ordinances establishing a speed limit on Highway one hundred from the city limits easterly to Highway thirteen. Final consideration.
Second. Then moved in second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six, amending chapter three-thirteen dash four-point-four-B of the Code of Ordinances establishing the speed limit on Highway one hundred from the city limits easterly to Highway thirteen. Final consideration. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the final consideration of ordinance number twenty-three dash zero-six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next, we have a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. Is there anyone here to address council? Please come forward. Okay, we'll close this part of the meeting and move on to council comments. We start with the newbie?
Sure. Um, I guess, yeah, the the main thing I want to say tonight is, you know, I'm just really honored and really excited to be a part of this council going forward. Um, and yeah, I'm just excited to meet as many more people within the city as I can and and learn even more as I go along. So so thank you all for your votes and confidence, and um I'm excited. So thank you.
Isn't, Mayor, isn't the new person supposed to be at the library every Saturday for the first like six months?
Yes, of course.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I can do it.
I know he would.
Yeah, I think we're uh finally entering that time of year where we're starting to see a lot of people, a lot of new activities outside. My wife and I were walking last week, and we're seeing the younger kids pulling their bikes out of the garages. Obviously, the trails are going to be used a lot more. So I think that's one thing we need to be cognizant of, uh, is more activities, more bikes in the street, more bikes on the sidewalk. So that's a great thing. It also means it's golf season for some of those hackers that are out there like me.
Well, um, I don't know that I have anything of specific substance to say other than welcome, Gage. And I would just say, uh, please count me as a resource to uh fill in any gaps that you might not presently understand. But you've watched us over uh many, many, many months, and so I think you get the ebb and flow of the activity quite well. Um, I would just have to say, uh, you know, I occupied that chair and then subsequently uh collected. This end of the dais is the agitator section, okay? So I predict you'll fill that role quite well. I have nothing else, your honor.
Congratulations, Gage.
Thank you.
Welcome. I was going to make some smart comment about bringing food for everybody, being the new guy, but I'll I'll just leave it. Um, I I noticed, I follow up on what Steve said about everybody being out. I think it was Tuesday. I drove out of the, my driveway and started going down the street and thought, oh, my gosh, everything is green. Everything's starting to turn green. It was so nice. So um, that's all I got.
Thank you. Um, I as well, uh, would like to thank uh Kim and uh Lou for participating in uh the application process. I had done this as well myself when uh uh the mayor left his ward to um to become mayor, so I know what that process is like. We're not uh strangers to this process. It's exciting to see people continue to have the interest and support to want to participate at this level. So uh, we appreciate that. And once again, congratulations, Gage. We look uh forward to working with you again at a completely different uh level and and perspective. So welcome, and I look forward to working with you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, for my part, I want to wish our fire chief a happy birthday. Many years. And uh, twenty-nine. Uh, Gage, I want to welcome you. Look forward to working with you and seeing your contributions. I know that you're going to contribute in a very positive way. I think Ward One will be well represented. Our city will be well represented by you. Um, seeing you make your presentation and the passion and the uh and the commitment that you have at your age, it just um was very inspiring, and it it reminded me of when I uh was up there, really wanting to be appointed uh for that seat in twenty thirteen. And um, I I just look forward to working with you and having you contribute to our work here. Um, I want to congratulate the Linmar Show Choir, uh, the Varsity Show Choir on winning the uh Show Choir Nationals uh competition in Nashville. It was a lot of fun, and those kids and the parents and the families all represent this community so well, as as all our kids do in this town, wherever wherever they go, they um really represent Marion well, and it was just a proud weekend. And uh, it was really fun to see the reception that they got when they, when they came back home and um uh, just put Marion on the map in another way that, you know, just one more, one more way that Marion's being recognized uh across the nation, so. And congratulations to Coach Bluder also, who's a Marion uh native and um Linmar graduate. Uh, an amazing season, and we'll, we're, we're, we'll look for ways to honor her on behalf of the community um and show her how much we appreciate her. Um. This, uh, last, was it last week that we went to Des Moines or the week before? Last week? We went to Des Moines, a group of us, uh, including city manager and Steve, um, and Nick Blue, uh, to talk to um legislators about the issues that Marion uh and all cities are facing with with the, as a, as, as a result of legislation that's being considered. Oh, and Leanne. I'm sorry, Leanne gave up her day off to go to Des Moines, so she she was especially committed, so, sorry, Le- Leanne. See, that's what happens when you start to name people, you forget somebody, so. But we, I I thought that was the most productive trip we've made to Des Moines that day. Uh, so I want to thank everybody who was involved and who helped set that up. Uh, we worked with our new lobbyists and set up the meetings and felt like we really were heard. Um, see what happens, but uh at least we were able to um uh express our interest in being part of the solutions and being at the table. Uh, so that that was a very productive effort, I thought. The other thing I wanted to mention was an interesting email I received last week from a a woman in Ohio who's trying to save uh historic churches in her town. So the word about Marion got out, and uh they want the ideas. So again, another way that Marion is being, you know, recognized as a, as a positive force by other, by other communities, so. With that, thank you, everyone, for a good meeting, and we'll see you next time. Meeting's adjourned.